Board will now come to order. The clerk of the board will now do the roll call.
Mr. Claxton?
Here.
Ms. Bundy?
Here.
Mr. Hunley?
Here.
Mrs. Sidner?
Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Nothing on my end.
Hearing none, we'll move on to school board appointments and reorganization. We have three items to do there. The first item is appointment of the central district school board member. I'm really, really pleased that we had six, really all good applicants, very strong applicants. To me, that's a sign that there is interest in serving on the school board. I think that's awesome. And I think multiples of those six and maybe some others that we don't know about are going to choose to run for the special election. But this body was able to narrow down one candidate that, whose resume stuck out to me and to pretty much everybody as really appealing because of the breadth and depth of experience as an educator, which if you haven't noticed, we don't have. We used to have and Ms. Floyd had to move on, so that was kind of my main focus and everybody seemed to agree with me that that was an important expertise to fill to round out our board. We all have different expertises and different perspectives, but that of an educator, especially one with more than a decade, quote me or correct me if I'm wrong, more than a decade of classroom teaching experience, a lot of sped background, which is vitally important, administrator experience, building level administrator, central office administrator, presently a building office administrator in two districts that are here in the northern Eck Middle Peninsula, you know, so kind of, and then lives in the county, has three kids in our school system. To me, that's just, that's a story, you know, that's made for what we're doing. So without further ado, can I get a motion to appoint? I guess I shouldn't say the name, you'll have to come up with the name. Can I get a motion to appoint our new school board member?
I make a motion to appoint a new member.
Could you say his name, please? Could you say his name, please?
Michael Brunig.
That's how you say it.
Brunig, yeah.
Brunig, sorry.
That's okay.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Excellent. All in favor, can I signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposing? Okay, the ayes have it. We have a newly appointed central district school board member that, just so everyone understands, will be serving out the rest of this calendar year. And then I believe you are, have qualified to be on the ballot.
I heard, yeah, but I'm getting there.
Okay, all right, so you're waiting to hear that and you're planning to be on the ballot and running for election, so with any luck at all, you'll be serving with us into next year and an abbreviated term to fill out Ms. Floyd's original term, so two more years, and then you get to run for reelection again. So it's good fun. So without further ado, please come on up and join the board that you have been duly appointed to serve on.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, thank you.
Don't disappoint us. Don't disappoint us.
Congratulations.
Can you hear me? Yes, ma'am.
Don't disappoint us.
Sorry for the name.
No, it's all good. It's all good.
I shouldn't have left that one to chance. I should. Not like it's Jones or something. There's some out there.
The role of Jones.
I just took that for me.
You know what I mean, I didn't, I didn't.
Nothing wrong, just easy.
Easy.
We got a lot of Joneses and Davis.
There you go. I was just explaining that. Easy ones. Sorry.
My last name, everybody wants to say Snyder or Sidnor. It's never Sidner.
All right, well, that's an important order of business. Do we need to do any more roll call or anything like that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
Because we just appointed him, so clearly he's here.
Yes.
Okay, great, this is super exciting. Okay, item B, appointment of school board chairs. Everybody knows that Ms. Floyd departed, that left a vacancy in the appointed office of school board chair, so.
Vice chair.
Vice chair, I'm sorry. Can I get a nomination in the form of a motion for a new vice chair to serve out the rest of this calendar year?
I would like to nominate Ms. Sidner to be the vice chair for the remainder of the school year.
My second.
Okay, I've got a nomination motion and a second. All in favor to include Mr. Brunig, can you signify your support by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. We have a new school board vice chair, Ms. Andrea Sidner, to serve out the rest of calendar year 2025. Can I get a motion to nominate a new school board deputy clerk? And before, does everyone know who we typically nominate, what position within the school division?
For deputy?
Yeah.
Sharon.
No, Sharon's the clerk. We typically have our assistant superintendent.
Yes, yes, normally the superintendent or assistant superintendent or the chief academic officer in the past, so.
Right, okay, so deputy, okay.
Yeah, so it's our assistant superintendent. I asked that because I didn't want you to be stumped when, if you have to make the nomination, since I won't be making the nomination, so. So would someone like to make a nomination for our assistant superintendent to be school board deputy clerk, unless you have a different idea of what other position should be, should perform that role? And I'll entertain a nomination.
And in the past, Dr. Tom was held that position.
And Dr. Blunt was the most recent.
Yeah, most recent, yeah. Yes, and he certainly could, but I, so we can have that discussion, if you think, if you think the superintendent should do. It's probably a more appropriate role for, to not, a better use of her time than his time.
Right.
You know, in that function, so.
And what was the time again?
School, a school board deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk.
It's a non-paid, just assigned additional duty. In the event that Ms., what's your name, Ms. Saunders, I've only talked to her like four times today, that Ms. Saunders cannot attend a meeting, we would have this person substitute and help officiate the meeting.
All right, well, I don't think, I don't really think we should prolong it because, you know, what happens if Ms. Sharon can't?
Right.
So I make a motion to elect Assistant Superintendent Dorana Scott to be the deputy clerk.
Excellent. Can I get, I have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion improperly seconded, all in favor of appointing Mr. Dorana Scott as school board deputy clerk, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Sounds like the ayes have it, okay. So Ms. Dorana Scott will be the school board deputy clerk. Work session, and I hope this will be good for everybody. I think it's great timing for Mr. Brunig, but we're going to start, because we all need this, and we've gotten, our public has made the same observation, that we're probably in need of some training. And so we're going to start tonight, our attorney, Brandon Butler, is going to start a series of training to give us refresher for most of us, or it might be the first time, it doesn't matter, but refresher on parliamentary procedures and Roberts Rules of Orders, so that we can have more precise and orderly conducted meetings. And then next month, Freedom of Information Act, refresher training, the following month, Conflict of Interest Administrator, Conflict of Interest Act training. And then after that, haven't figured it out yet, but I want to start just having us as a group going through portions of the standards of quality, because throughout those, I think it's 13 chapters of Virginia State Code, you know, there must be hundreds and hundreds of sentences that says, "The board will do this, this, or this." So let's read it together, let's read it ourselves, we have our attorney and our superintendent, and we'll all come to agreement on what does this mean for us, what is this, because that's what we're supposed to be doing, nothing more, nothing less. So that's kind of what I'm thinking. Over the next few months, we'll do it during our work sessions, and we'll all learn this together, because it's a lot of stuff. And I think, I'd like, I just want us to be more intentional about learning it, rather than just kind of figuring it out as you go along by, by running it, by doing something wrong and then learning, oh, we didn't do that, you know, right, that, you know, that's a way of learning, but I think we can be more intentional about it and read it for ourselves. Okay, so Mr. Butler, you're up.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and as the chairman said, you know, there's a lot that can be covered in these types of sessions. We're trying to split them up so we don't bore you with legalese for over an hour in a work session. I mean, I don't want to see a bunch of glazed eyes up there, so we're going to split these up into different sessions. I'm going to try to keep them at about 15 to 20 minutes each. I'm going to try to have an outline prepared for each of you each night, so you can follow along, we'll just follow that outline and just go through some of these points with each of these subject matters. And tonight, we're going to talk about procedure for the board and specifically some rules of order under Roberts Rules of Order. And I know a lot of you have served on this board for a while, maybe some of you have served on other boards, but this is kind of the gold standard for procedure across multiple boards, across multiple legislative bodies across the country. And it's been around for about 200 years. It's been amended and changed multiple times. This is the 12th edition, this is the most current edition, and as you can see, it's pretty extensive. It basically covers every kind of procedural situation that you could encounter on a board like this. Most of the stuff in this book, we will never encounter in this room, so I'm just going to really try to highlight, you know, some of the major points that you all will be dealing with, so you just have a better understanding of the way that things should work under rules of procedure. And what that does is it not only keeps your meetings flowing in an orderly fashion, but it also ensures that each board member is empowered to make motions, to make argument, know when the proper time to make those motions is, and basically represent the people that elected you, your constituents, by doing your job and having your voice heard. So that's, that's the main purpose of rules of procedure and strictly following those rules of procedure, just so everyone's on notice of what they are, and these meetings are conducted in an orderly fashion. So the first question, where do rules of procedure come from for a board like this? As we've already discussed, Roberts Rules of Order is kind of the backup, and if you think about this like a totem pole, at the top are statutes, law. You know, what does the Virginia Freedom of Information Act state about open meeting requirements and the procedure that boards like yours have to follow as a local government entity? School board statutes, that's also a part of Virginia Code, what does that say about what boards like you have to do in meetings like this? Local policy, you all have a number of policies, whether you're familiar with them or not, I don't know how long they've been in place, that you all have passed on how to conduct your meetings. Some boards convert those into bylaws, and I know that's a discussion that can be had by you all at a later date, but right now, you do have these policies and they do set some procedural ground rules for you to follow. And when you go through those three levels, when you get to the end, there's all this in-between space of stuff that's not covered by state law, by your own board policies, and that's where Roberts Rules of Order come into place. It fills in the gaps for just the minutia of procedure and how that's done. And so that's kind of where procedural rules come from, and at any point as we're going through this, if you have a question, feel free to stop me, it's not going to throw me off or distract me. I'm used to judges looking down at me and asking me questions when I'm right in the middle of a beautiful argument, so it's not going to throw me off, I promise you, so if you have a question, please ask. So the first thing, if you look down at the next section that we'll talk about, is quorum. And what is quorum? I'm sure most of you are familiar with that. It's basically, for most purposes, unless there's another standard in your bylaws, it's a majority of the board, that constitutes a quorum. That's what you need in order to conduct a meeting. So for a five-member board such as yourself, three of you have to be here in order to have a quorum, in order to conduct the meeting. What is the chair's role in a meeting? You know, some of you may have chaired other boards elsewhere, have chaired this board. What is the chair's role? The chair presides, the chair recognizes members to speak, the chair is the ultimate authority on the rules of procedure. Now, the way that works on a lot of boards is if the chairman has a question about the rules of procedure, he can look at the parliamentarian and ask the parliamentarian for an opinion. If there's disagreement with the chairman, oftentimes the chairman will ask for a parliamentarian's opinion. That can be anybody, a lot of times, it is an attorney. So the chair makes rules, makes rulings on points of procedure, and we'll go over in a little bit, there is a way for the board to overrule the chairman on those points of procedure, but that's, you know, the default, the chair rules on that. In a small board such as yourself, a board that's under 12 members, according to Roberts Rules of Order, the chair may debate, make motions, and vote without vacating the chair. So larger boards, when that happens, if the chair wants to vote, if the chair wants to make an argument, the chair would have to temporarily vacate the chair, appoint someone else, make the argument, step back into the chair. On a small board, Roberts Rules of Procedure allow the chair to make motions, to make argument, participate just like any other member. The clerk's role, what does the clerk do? The clerk keeps the official minutes and records.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What you just said about chair, I don't think, it's not been our experience, you know, we're kind of under the impression that you customarily don't. I don't, I think I knew that you could, but you don't normally. Do you have any advice on us? Should we, should we try to, like, if there's no reason? The chair, as chair doesn't normally make motions or vote unless there needs to be a vote for a tiebreaker, and, you know, I'm going to rely on you guys to make the motions and seconds and stuff.
So there's a difference between a right and a best practice.
Okay.
So as a matter of right, a small board, the chairman does have the right to make a motion.
Okay.
In terms of best practice, since the chairman is running the meeting, the chairman is ruling on points of order, on procedure, it's probably best practice to let someone else make the motion.
Okay.
If at all possible, but that doesn't mean you're stripped of your right to make a motion as a member of this board.
Okay. So that's very important that everybody knows, if you're in this chair, like you said, it's a best practice, probably not to, but you can if you need to. Very good, thank you.
Yeah, and I've listed under, and I'm not going to go through, you know, each point of authority, but I have listed the authority for each of these points underneath on the outline, so if you want to go back and look these up, see where they're coming from, definitely feel free to do that, familiarize yourself. So that's, that's why those are in there. Meetings, notice, agendas, and materials under FOIA. We're going to have a FOIA training later on, a lot of open meeting requirements are under the FOIA statute, so we're not going to go too much into those, just briefly, because we're going to cover those in another meeting. But generally, as you all know, meetings are open to the public unless lawfully closed under a FOIA exemption. You all use closed session pretty regularly, I know you're familiar with the requirements for that. A meeting must be posted at least three working days in advance under the code of Virginia. So state bodies use an electronic calendar, you all, I know you just posted on your website, and there's nothing wrong with that, and you're completely empowered to do that under the code. In terms of agenda and packet availability, if an agenda or meeting materials are prepared, they must be made available to the public at the same time they are furnished to the members. Now, that doesn't mean that there can't be late changes, a lot of times, things will come up, you need to put them on the agenda, you need, you have new materials that go with those points, you can do that as long as, at the same time, the board is getting those public materials, as long as they're not subject to a closed meeting exemption, they're public materials, when the board gets that, they should be posted for the public. And in terms of minutes for these meetings, we've already talked about, one of the roles of the clerk is to take minutes. Generally, under the code, unless, you know, there's some sort of extraordinary circumstance, meetings should be posted within seven working days, should be approved within seven working days, and onto the website.
So I have a question, if you don't mind, I didn't realize we had moved on. So in regards to the clerk's minutes, can we, or should we, take minutes in closed session? Because if we've taken minutes, that's considered as being public. We don't take minutes.
And this might be getting into a little bit more legal advice than the training here, but my advice is, you're completely authorized under the code, you don't need to take minutes in closed session. That's, that's a board decision, if you want.
Oh, so it is a board decision.
It is a board decision. It's not always best practice to do that, but that is a board decision.
But if we take minutes, is that public? Is that something that can?
If it's under a, if it's under a closed session exception, no, you are creating a government record, but because it relates to that closed session, it's not subject to public disclosure.
So no one can request that through FOIA?
No one can request it. The issue usually is, with other boards that have done that, is they somehow get out anyway, and then that can create other problems. So that's why a lot of boards don't take minutes in closed session, because it keeps everything confidential.
Yeah, we just recently started doing it, because we'll, you know, just human nature will have different memories of conversation that happened, and so it, so maybe we don't have to do it forever, but I think in the near term, it's been helpful. We've had, you know, in the last few months, it's been helpful.
Right, yeah, and that's a perfectly valid reason to do that, and you can even ask for minutes to be taken on some subjects and not others.
And it's very brief, you know, it's, it's just kind of memory joggers on, here's, here's what was discussed.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great question.
That was a very good question. The next section is order of business. This is just a general outline from Roberts Rules. Each board kind of sets their own order of business, but generally, the way it should flow, you know, for your regular meeting, is the call to order, the roll call. Adoption of the agenda is first, that requires a majority vote. If you want to go back and amend the agenda after you've already approved it, that requires a three-fourths vote, so you don't want to get to that point, you want to make your amendments upfront before the adoption of the agenda. Approval of the minutes, we've already talked about that. Reports from employees, superintendent committees, sometimes, you know, the board attorney will have a report in some public meetings. You then move on to unfinished business and general orders, what you took up at a prior meeting that you're bringing back up, you handle that first. Then new business, and then at the very end, you go into your closed session. You can do your closed session at any time. Most boards, for the purpose of respecting the public's time, if they're going to go into closed session, they generally do it at the end. And then you adjourn. All right, kind of the meat of this training, motions, seconds, and debate. So the general flow is a member, and any member is empowered to make a motion, there then must be a second. Without a second, the motion dies. I think most of you are probably familiar with that, if someone makes a motion, no one seconds it, it's off the table, it's voted down, the motion dies, it can't be brought back up except for a majority vote of the membership that was actually there voting that day. If the motion, the main motion does get a second, the chair then opens up for debate. Once debate is closed, you then vote, and then the chair announces the result in effect. In terms of the debate, it has to be confined to the merits of the pending question, so the chair, it's up to the chair and his discretion to recognize members for debate in a fair and orderly fashion, but the debate, your statements have to be related to the main motion. So what happens in a lot of boards is, you know, there will be a motion on the table, there's all kinds of kind of tangential issues that go around it, and people start talking about things that have nothing, that end up having nothing to do with the motion that's actually on the table. You want to avoid that, and the chair can actually speak up and remind a member that they are off topic, to only speak to the main motion that's on the table. So you want to basically stay on topic, that's the point of that. And so generally, the chair can set limits for debate, things like two speeches per member, three speeches per minute. If the chair sets a limit on debate that the rest of the board doesn't agree with, someone can make a motion to overrule the chair and make a motion for other limits other than what the chair has proposed, but generally, unless there's an objection, the chair can set those limits. All right. And then in terms of subsidiary motions, so these are after the main motion has been made, and a lot of people don't realize, when you, when a main motion is on the table, these subsidiary motions, if another member makes a motion while debate for the main motion is going on, that subsidiary motion actually takes precedent, so you have to deal with that before you get back to the main motion. So for an example, if Ms. Bundy were to make a motion on a particular topic, and then Mrs. Sidner says, well, wait a minute, I'd like to make a motion, a motion to amend the main motion. Everything would stop on the main motion, there would be debate on the motion to amend, and that would either be accepted or rejected by the board by vote. If it's accepted, then the substitute motion, the amended motion, becomes the motion that's being debated. So that's the purpose of that, if there's an amendment, you want to deal with it, so you aren't voting and accepting something and then going back later and trying to say, well, we actually wanted to amend this. So that's why a motion to amend always takes precedent over the main motion. Some other subsidiary motions, a motion to postpone to time later, if you don't, if the majority of the board doesn't want to deal with it right now, you can postpone it to lay it on the table, vote now for urgent business, commit, refer for study to a subcommittee, or to postpone indefinitely, basically state, we're not going to deal with it right now, we don't know when we're going to deal with it, we can bring it back up at a later time by majority vote, but we're not going to deal with it tonight. So those are some, some ordinary subsidiary motions. Just a general, good practice for clarity, and this is something I've seen a lot of boards struggle with, you don't want to make what are called negative motions. So tonight, you all, there was a motion to approve Mr. Brunig as a new member of this board. If someone had opposed him being appointed to this board for whatever reason, you should not make a motion that says, I make a motion that we, that we do not approve Mr. Brunig. That's not a proper motion, that's what's called a negative motion. If you want to lay it on the table for debate, or actually to vote, if you want to call the question, you can make a motion to approve Mr. Brunig as a member of this board, and even though you're the one making the motion or making the second, once it's up for a vote, you can vote against that motion. So that's one way you can, you can kill an action by the board, is you make a motion for it, and then you vote against it. And a lot of people don't realize that. It sounds kind of counterintuitive, but the reason for that is when you start making negative motions, people's yays and nays get confused, their ayes and nays, because they don't know what they're voting against or what they're voting for. I make a motion that Mr. Brunig not be a part of this board. Well, if I'm, if I'm voting yes, am I voting that he not be a part of this board, or am I voting for him? It gets confusing, so you want to keep your, your motions in a positive form. I make a motion to approve him, but then you can vote against your own motion. Does that make sense?
So you make a motion even though you, I think.
It's really a motion to call the question, you want a vote on it, but the proper form is you make a motion for the approval. You're not voting by making that motion, you're simply calling the question for a vote. So a lot, that's, that's something a lot of people don't understand and get confused with, and you can make a negative motion, it's not, it's not like it's going to not be valid if you make a negative motion and that passes, it just gets confusing. And so that's why Roberts Rules discourages that.
And if it does happen, then I can rephrase it to a positive.
That was going to be my next point, the chairman can always rephrase the motion if it is formed in a negative fashion. All right, voting methods and what FOIA forbids. Permissible methods, unanimous consent, there's usually a consent agenda for most boards, you can do that. A show of hands is common in small boards, that can happen. A voice vote, which is what you all have done tonight, as long as it's unanimous, that usually works. Something I'm going to get to that I noticed in you all's policies is, you actually require a roll call vote for every vote that you take in your own board policies, because the clerk has to be able to determine individually how each of you voted. Now, if it's unanimous, if there's a voice vote, all in favor, aye, any opposed, no one's opposed, she knows how you all voted because it's unanimous. If it's not unanimous, unless there's one person and she can readily identify who that one person was that voted nay, you need to have a voice vote. And that's, that's by, by your policy, so.
And you do that whenever that does happen? Are you just able to do it by observing?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
If there's ever a question, as clerk, you can always stop and say, I need a voice vote to determine this.
Right.
And that's perfectly fine, and that goes to the chairman, and the chairman can ask for that.
And are you, are we suggesting that we should consider doing, you know, raising our hands, or something more?
No, I think voice vote is fine, as long as it's obvious.
Okay.
If it's not obvious, somebody should speak up and ask for a voice vote.
And is it a good practice for the chair to always, even if I think it was unanimous, to ask if there was? to ask if there was?
Always ask any opposed, which which you did tonight. And I noticed that. And I was, that's a good practice. Always ask.
I don't know that I've always.
Because sometimes when you're, everybody's saying, aye, it could be one didn't say something or whatever. So, yeah.
And especially in larger boards, it's not not as applicable here, but a lot of people will yell out aye to make it seem like more people are saying it. And then you think you've got this strong majority, and then when you actually do a roll call, you don't. So on this board, it's a little more simple, but if there's any question, ask for a roll call.
So ballot, I thought I read somewhere that you don't do.
Your board cannot do a secret ballot. This is under Roberts rules. That's allowed. I'm going to get to it later. Obviously, everything that's going on here is public business. You cannot do a secret ballot. And I think that's actually, if you go to page four at the top, no secret or written ballots to transact public.
Oh, no. I did some turn to the next page. This is right there.
Yeah. No voting outside of a meeting. That doesn't mean, you know, if you're having a conversation with another board member, as long as there's not three of you there, that you can't discuss how you're leaning on a topic, discuss the merits of it. But you cannot take an official vote outside of a public meeting by phone, by text, by email, and then come into the meeting and act like you all passed something. That's that's disallowed. And it actually happens more than you would believe with boards who who think they have done something just because they've all voted by email. So I think you all know you can't do that. All right. Recorded and roll call votes, what's required. We've kind of already gone through that. But generally, even if you think you have unanimity or a strong majority, under Virginia law, you do have to, you do have to take a roll call for the following situations. If you're entering a closed meeting, the meeting must be approved in open session by an affirmative recorded vote on the motion. So there needs to be a roll call vote for that. Certifying a closed meeting, when you come out of the closed meeting, the certification resolution is read. The fact that you're each agreeing to that, that needs to be a roll call vote as well. So anyone who may who may not agree with that certification resolution can speak up at that time. The next two, I don't believe you all have policy for all virtual meetings. That's something a lot of boards during COVID added to their bylaws. And that's actually, bylaws are required for that under the code of Virginia. That may be something you all want to consider moving forward. But as long as you don't have that, that doesn't really apply to you. And we've already talked about under this board's policy, every decision is recorded by member name. So if there's any question, you need a roll call vote. And I just listed some common things that you all do that generally you should have a roll call vote on. Expenditures, personnel actions that you're required to take in open sessions, such as appointments, contracts, and stipends. You want to take a roll call vote on that. Policy adoptions and revisions, best practice, roll call vote. Budget submissions, anytime you're spending money, generally, it's a good rule to have a roll call vote. Facilities and real estate matter. Student matters requiring board action. You want to treat that a little more formally, do a roll call vote. And then resolutions and formal statements of the board. That's encouraged under Roberts rules, but you all do a lot of resolutions. I think that's fine for a voice vote because you're usually all in agreement on those. Litigation settlements, obviously, anything to do with money, you want a roll call vote. All right. Vote thresholds. Under Roberts rules, unless something under state law or under your own board policies requires something different, Roberts rules lays out three different categories of what kind of vote is required. That's majority vote for some things, two thirds vote for others, and a majority of the entire membership for others, which is different than majority. A majority is just a majority of the board members that are here. A majority of the entire membership for your board would be three votes, if that makes sense. So actions that ordinarily require only a majority vote, adopting main motions, we've talked about that, amending, a pending motion, a motion to reconsider a vote, and that always has to be moved for by a member who voted on the prevailing side. So if there's a three to three to two vote by this board, and this board wants to reconsider that vote, someone who voted nay, who was in the two, they cannot make that motion to reconsider it. That has to come from someone who voted with a majority. That's a point that a lot of people miss. An appeal of a decision by the chair, that only requires a majority vote against the chair. Elections for chair and vice chair, which you all did tonight, that requires a simple majority. Action under Roberts rules that require more than a majority. Closing debate, if you all, if no ground rules were set to start the debate, you are kind of having an endless debate, and someone wants to end it, they make a motion to end debate. That requires two thirds of you in order to stop the debate and move on to call the question and vote. A motion to suspend the rules. If you have standing rules of order, and you are, you all are seeking to suspend those and use something else, that requires a two thirds vote. Set aside orders of the day or take up business out of its proper order. So if you have something at the end of an agenda that's already been approved, you want to move that up or down, that requires a two thirds vote. Close nominations, that's similar to closed debate. You need two thirds. Rescind or amend something previously adopted. Similar to a motion to reconsider, but you can also amend something that you've previously adopted without notice. So if that's just brought up in a meeting, it wasn't on the agenda, it's without notice. Not only are you amending the agenda, you're also amending a previous action of the board. That requires a two thirds vote. If there's previous notice given, it only requires a majority. And suppression of consideration of a main motion, if you don't even want to take something up and and discuss it, if it's got a first and a second, and honestly, for this board, if it's got a first and a second, you're not going to get to two thirds to say you can't debate and consider it. So that doesn't really apply to you all. But for bigger boards, that would require two thirds of you.
Well, is that under the assumption that a motion and second means you you probably support?
Well, I mean, now that you say that and I think about it, you might not. So, yeah.
But you should show your your non-support by not making a second or a motion.
Exactly, yeah.
So it's illogical.
Right, right. But it could happen.
Gotcha. So a quick question. I think you just answered it, actually. So 99% of the time, majority vote, it applies to us.
Right.
And then two thirds, by my math, means four out of five.
It would for you. Yeah, three fifths would not be, would not be two thirds.
So so really, it's just these, these, and you've listed the ones that, are these all the possibilities that?
Those aren't all the possibilities. Those are the main ones that you guys are going to come across.
Close debate, I mean, that could happen. These others don't seem like things that we normally deal with.
Right. Those are common to some boards, probably not common to this board. But yeah, there's there's others in this big, thick book, but I didn't want to waste your time with those. But if they ever come up, we'll we'll know where to go.
You read it so that we don't have to.
That's right. All right. Closed meetings, the correct procedure for entering a closed meeting. The motion to enter the closed meeting must state the subject perfect, purpose in the specific code section that's applicable under 2.23711A. So not only do you have to state why you're going into closed session, but you have to add a little bit more to that in terms of the code requires the purpose for it. And that is a subjective term. That is just all over the place in terms of how different boards interpret that and put it into practice. I kind of fall somewhere in between on that. And looking at the way you guys go into closed session, I don't have a huge problem with what you're what you're already listing. So I think you're you're kind of somewhere in the middle. Some people go so much into what they're going to discuss in closed session, there's almost no purpose to go into closed session. So you kind of want to be somewhere in the middle on that, but it is a subjective term. While in closed session, obviously, discussion must be limited to the matters in the motion so that you can vote in the positive on that certification resolution. And no final action may be taken in closed session. Obviously, any action that you take that's binding has to be in a public meeting. So while you can discuss how you're going to vote, you know, different elements of that vote, if it's something that's under a closed session exemption, you cannot actually take the vote in closed session.
Could you, would it be accurate to say you can like take a straw man vote, but the official vote's got to be done in?
Right. You can discuss what your vote's going to be, kind of get a sense of where the board's leading, but you can't actually take that vote.
Gotcha.
All right. And then after closed session, you make a motion to go back into open session. And then upon reconvening, reconvening, the certification resolution is read, and a roll call, recorded vote of each member's response is taken and placed into the minutes by the clerk. All right. Just very quickly, in terms of the minutes, what should go in the minutes? The date, time, and place of when the meeting is happening, the members present and absent, the fact that there is or is not a quorum. If there's not a quorum, obviously, the meeting never gets started and ends. The exact wording of motions. That is something that a lot of boards have struggled with, and clerks have struggled with, actually, is not getting the exact wording of the motion. Sometimes motions happen on the fly, and we know that. If you ever have any question about what the exact wording of the motion was, you can ask the chair, stop the meeting, clarify what that is. That's very important that it goes in the meet, into the minutes what the exact motion was.
We, it, there's been times where we've had, you know, kind of complex motions. I know I've done. I've just given it to her in writing because I had it so that I could read it without messing it up.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that acceptable?
That is acceptable. You still want to put that on the record, though. So if you have it in writing, you want to read that. But it is perfectly acceptable, once that is is publicly orally spoken, to give that to the clerk so she has what what the motion actually was.
Perfect.
All right. Signatures, minutes must be signed by the chair and the clerk. You all already do that. That is proper practice. Posting, under Virginia code, you all usually approve your minutes at the next meeting. Those approved minutes must be posted within seven working days of final approval. So just make sure that those are are being posted. They can be posted in a public place. If there is no website, you all have a website. You can post it there. Tie votes. You all didn't really have to deal with this until you only had four members. But if you run into a situation where a member is not here and you only have four of you, you can have a tie vote. So what happens under the rules of procedure if there's a tie vote? If there's a tie vote and all members are not present, the question must be passed by to the next meeting. You all have probably run into that in the past with a five-person board. If someone's not here, you've probably had to pass stuff on to the next meeting in the past. If there is a tie with all members present, for you all, that would only happen if you're, if you don't have a member that's been appointed yet, or if someone is abstaining from a vote for a conflict of interest. You could, if all members are present and you have a tie vote, you all, you all don't have an authorized tiebreaker because you you have an odd number on your board. That more applies to boards that have even numbers, which I actually had a discussion with the board a few weeks ago, that they have always had eight members on their board, which is just counterintuitive to me, why you would have an even number, and they run into the situation all the time, and they don't have an elected tiebreaker. So imagine that. That doesn't really apply to you all. If all your members are present, you should not need a tiebreaker. But if no tiebreaker exists, the motion fails. All right. And then I just reference all the authorities that were used in this outline. If you want to go back and take a look at those, or you have any questions. And that is it for rules of procedure. I know that was a lot for 20, 25 minutes. But if you have any questions, you can ask them now, or you can always email me procedural questions, call me about them. Happy to talk about it.
So I have a question, very quickly, in regards to the tie votes. So with us being a five-member board, and the chair doesn't vote, well.
I think y'all's practice has been the chair doesn't make the motion, but the chair still votes.
That's right. So the chair make the motion, the four of us vote, and there's a tie. So with that tie, because of what you mentioned earlier in regards to the chair have the right to make a motion to vote, if there is a tie, the chair can vote to?
Well, it's it's my understanding the chair votes anyway.
Yes.
So there's always going to be five votes unless one of you is not here or abstains.
Right. I see the confusion, though, like if I, because I don't think I, when I was asking for all of support, say, signified by saying aye, I don't know that I said anything, but I also didn't say nay or no.
Right.
You know, so you knew.
Right.
Yeah, that. So I'm in effect voting, even though it's not as apparent as you guys.
It might just be a good practice when you call for a voice vote. It's kind of awkward to say all in favor and then say aye yourself, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll do better about doing that. Perfect, perfect.
Yep. Any other questions?
What did you used to do? Do you remember?
Just, is there any ayes, ayes and nays, and that's it?
I mean, like, did you say aye? I can't remember.
Can't remember. No, I didn't. I'm like, is there any ayes or nays?
But yeah, but if it's ever a question, that's where the clerk, you don't be bashful, ask. And great.
So then we wouldn't have a tiebreaker unless we lost someone like you.
I can remember you saying nay a few times.
Yeah.
So I guess you would, in essence, I guess you would have.
Nay.
Right. So that's reported, yeah.
That just popped in my brain. It woke up.
But our clerk will not let that happen. She will not let that go unanswered question about who who voted which way.
So I do have a question, if you don't mind. It doesn't really apply to me, but I'm just curious about it. So quorum. So for our board, a quorum is three, three people, right?
Right.
So does that apply if three of our board members happen to be at the same social event, for example?
So there are, there are exceptions under the code for social events, political events. There's a couple other exceptions that would apply. But anything dealing with public policy as it applies to the board, with the exception of of political events and social events, purely social events, if if, so say you're out on a site visit somewhere, and three of your board members are going to be there. Under the code, that actually counts as a public meeting and has to be advertised.
That's what I.
So anytime there are three, and the code is written very weirdly. It actually says three members seated. So there used to be the joke, well, just don't sit down, and you're all good.
And that's actually under our next topic, which is Freedom of Information Act.
Yeah, that'll be covered there. That open meeting fall, fall, falls under Freedom of Information Act. But just to briefly answer your question, if it's a public business matter and there's three board members there, generally, you have to advertise that it's a public meeting.
Well, especially if it's something, excuse me, that that we organized, right? I mean, if it's something that the public, it's truly a public, like, we're all going to the farmer's market or something. That's not on us.
That's not planned. Right. You're not all planning to be there. You don't know you're going to see each other. That's not a public.
And I'm sure you'll cover it in that training next month, but I think there's also about, you know, if if it's, if we know, like, we can go to training, you know, organizational training, a school board association training altogether, because we're not there to discuss Essex County School Board.
Exactly.
Business.
That's general education.
Training. So we can be there together.
Yeah, we can go more into depth on that in the FOIA training, but you're absolutely right.
And then, say, for an example, a football game or basketball game, that's a social. Does that fall under?
That is an extracurricular social event. I would hope you all would go see your state championship football team. I wish I had one close to me I could go to. But no, that would not be a public meeting for the purposes of advertising.
Awesome. Awesome. Any other questions from board members? That was outstanding. I hope you guys, I hope it was helpful to you. I know it was helpful to you, Mike.
Absolutely.
It was definitely helpful to me, and all of a sudden, it's good to keep us. We want orderly, disciplined, you know, effective meetings. So this is, that's what this is about. So can you send us the electronic copy?
Yes, I will. I'll email it to you.
That would be helpful. That's a keeper to refer back to. So.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on, and a bit more quickly to item B under the work session, Virginia Department of Education Accountability Update 2025. About to rush.
All right. So I am, well, good evening, Chairman Croxton, members of the board, Dr. Jones. I'm just reporting on what I brought to you guys last time, but with some changes and some updates. I put in to the board the exact same presentation, but with some updated scores. So nothing that was in there before is changed, but we do have some additions. Dr. Daniels called this. When our vendor sent out the data spreadsheet, they said that it was incorrect, but the data was correct. So anyway, someone's, someone's mistake ended up me using, with me using the incorrect data. So I wanted to come back to you guys and fix that. So here we have the 24, 25 pass rates. These changed a little bit from the last time I came up. So the elementary school was up by a half of a percentage overall, James H. Carey by one, and then the Essex High School went down about 3.9%. But again, we're including that history, which doesn't account towards accountability. And then for Tapahana. And then for Tappahannock Elementary, there were increases in reading three, four, and math three. I want you to take a nice look at math three at the 24, 25 pass rate. This is where Dr. Daniels was like, no, that can't be right. And Dr. Daniels was correct. So yeah, that is an amazing score. We have a veteran teacher in there who is amazing. And then math four took a drop last year at the elementary school.
Can you give names?
I could give kudos to Ms. Heaven Ball. She's amazing, yes. And then at James Carey Intermediate School, reading 50, 50, 15, you'll see increases in reading five and seven and decreases in reading six and eight. And then for math, we have decreases in math five, six, and seven, and increases in math, an increase in math eight. And for science, an increase in science five, a decrease in science eight, but still both sciences are in the 40s, which is a concern. For the high school, English 11 is down slightly, Algebra I was down. Geometry, Algebra II, and Biology were all up. And if you look at that column of 24, 25 pass rates, they're all above the 75% in that concluding column there. And that's it. Just wanted to update that. Oh, and they have said that those growth scores that we're all anxiously awaiting, where they used to say summer, it's now only saying fall. So it'll be a little while before we get those. So, yeah, thank you.
What's the takeaway from this?
Honestly, I just wanted to update you on those numbers to make sure that you had the accurate account of those numbers. But still, we're in a holding pattern until we get more information.
On the new system, but I mean, as far as assessing our achievement, you know, what?
It's about the same, like, in the sense that, you know, some different classes went up and some different classes went down. But if you were to average it all out, it would sort of come out in the wash, so to speak. The elementary school, I know they're really proud of the gains they've made, especially with only dropping in that one subject. So we're off to a great start.
I want to say for the record, I accept responsibility, and I think we should as board members, because it was very difficult, but I'm speaking of the last semester or earlier, the second semester of last year, when we missed 13 days due to weather, which kind of caught us with our, kind of caught us flat-footed. That hadn't happened in so long, and we didn't really have a good plan to be ready for that and what would we do? And we're fixing it for next year, I know. But, and with our change in leadership, it was just incredibly awkward time for, and us not having the expertise to kind of mandate that we, you know, add school days, that didn't feel right. We were deferring to you guys, but there was just a lot, lot happening. But I'm going to go on record saying I think it was, we failed, you know, collectively, we should have added.
Yeah, and on the academic ground, there was a lot of angst with teachers as far as being able to get through all of the material. Everyone was scrambling at the end, and that's just not best-case scenario.
Right.
Yep.
And would you say that, oh, you're...
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, yeah. I just hope we all agree, and we're going to prevent that from happening by having a better plan for that contingency. Because that contingency is going to happen just when you least expect it.
You've got to be prepared for the unexpected. And I think a lot of divisions may have been a little lackadaisical because we hadn't had a winter like that in some time. So it came out of nowhere, and we're like, oh, yeah, this can happen in Virginia.
It still can happen, yeah. And then when you, I'm sorry, when you have a plan, that's the beauty of having a plan, is that then you're not like debating and arguing.
Already know.
And we've already decided what we're going to do when this happens. Oh, it happened, do this, you know, because everybody...
And I think that's appreciated by everyone, you know, the teachers, the pairs, everyone knows, okay, this is the plan if we're to get these snow days.
Thank you. That's enough. What did you want?
So I was just wondering, because of where the numbers doesn't look as well, would that play a part as far as new teachers or?
Sometimes that's, you know, and we try not to say too much towards grade level scores in the open public because we don't want to accidentally pinpoint someone who might be a singleton teaching a subject. But at the same time, we want to value our veteran educators, and we're working very hard to build up our new educators. And it is all hands on deck kind of thing. I'm really, really happy to see faces returning from last year who are getting a jump on this year. I mean, there are teachers this year, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, you've so far exceeded where you were last year. It's a huge growth curve for someone to come into education who has not been trained as an educator, but it's happening everywhere. It's the new normal. So it's about us supporting and growing them and making sure that we give them everything that they need. As, you know, it takes several years to really maximize what you're capable of doing in the classroom. It just takes a little bit of time.
So we're making sure that we give those individuals the material, the tools, or whatever they need to be to get to where that other teacher is?
Yeah, and I'm smiling because that's part of us bringing back and making sure we have access to these instructional materials that we've adopted in the past. And one of the reasons why I keep bringing that to the board's attention because we want to make sure that our teachers have access to everything they need to build these lessons for our students.
Thank you.
One last comment, you're done, but one last comment. Thank you very much. Is, I've been reading on the accountability system, there's a new phase of it that it's somewhat directed at, you know, administration and school board. It's holding us accountable to how are we implementing standards of quality? How are we adhering to standards of quality? So not achievement, it's, you know, how are you, how are we doing organizing, running, you know, and governing the school? I think that's healthy. That's good. We need the accountability too, not just the teachers, so.
Yeah, can I add something there?
Please.
So I think that that's a good idea, too, that we all are speaking that same language from the top down. One of the conversations, a very brief conversation I had with Principal Dr. Daniels this morning is about that Ms. Ball, we were just talking about just the amazing work that she's doing. And so what we talked about is how can we get her to share some of that with her colleagues? And so, and I'm sure she won't have a problem doing that, but I think we have to put structures in place to sort of make that happen, just to share what she's doing. Because clearly, I mean, she's knocking out the park. And even, we even talked about a substitute teacher that she did a lot of training with before, whose scores, I'm sorry, were almost as good as hers, just based on the training she'd done with the sub last year.
Kind of like the mentoring kind of thing.
Yeah, replicate.
Yes, we want to, you know, have more of that, promote more of that.
Right, right.
I think you have a unanimous, please do, yeah.
We're on it.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, any other questions about the accountability? The next item, I don't think we have a presenter from it, but it's a pretty lengthy, detailed update on just how we're tracking on the, to date, on the centralization of financial services and human resources. So any questions on that? There's no presenter. But Ms. Tazanari wrote that, so you can reach out to her if you have any specific questions on that. Last item for our work session before we go into closed session is a bunch of policies that will be coming back to us next month for approval. So make sure, if you haven't already reviewed them and have questions, or does anyone have questions or discussion now on any of these policies? And for Mr. Bruni, exadification, all these are policies. We use Virginia School Board Association's policy services to help us update our policies. And by law, most of these policies have to be updated, even if it changed nothing every five years, just put a date on them. You already know this, but, or then, and then, but every once in a while, you know, we may have one that we've already modified for our local purposes, so we have to kind of make sure we catch that as well. So it's a partnership in making sure that, but usually, my little bit of experience is, you know, it's kind of good that they have to come before you because it's an opportunity to review them. If I hadn't had, you know, hadn't had a cause to go look up that one, because there's a lot of obscure policies. So it'd take the time to read them and see if there's something that you might, an idea you have to make improvement on it, is what the utility of this as well. So without further ado, we will move on to, that will end our work session. And we haven't made enough of a fuss about first day of school, but we'll hear about that later when we come back out in the opening session. So didn't want to think, didn't want you to think we didn't realize it was first day of school.
It's in my report.
All right, perfect. All right, closed session. May I get a motion to enter into closed session for legal matters and personnel matters pursuant to the legal exception at 2.2-3711, parentheses A, parentheses eight of the Code of Virginia, and review and discussion of personnel matters regarding two resignations, terminations, retirements, 27 appointments, 13 supplements and extra assignments, and eight amendments pursuant to the personnel exemptions at 2.2-3711, parentheses A, parentheses one of the Code of Virginia.
Make a motion to proceed.
May I get a second?
Second.
All right, we are in closed session.